Or give you information or discuss the matter. But we can schedule it for a future agenda if the council deems that it rises to that importance. So, you each have three minutes. And the first, I can take these cards as I receive them. And the first individual is Jody Hall. Come down to the microphone. And if you pull the microphone down where you're speaking right into it, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an agenda item number C-11. On October 11th, I hit a very large-sized pothole measuring forty-six by twenty-two inches in front of the cemetery. And I filed a claim with the city, and it's been recommended for you to consider denial on it. And I just want to let you know that there were no signs posted prior to the accident. I had no way to avoid it. Otherwise, I would have hit oncoming traffic or gone on a curb. I'm willing to discuss to avoid any further actions. And I have included documents regarding the severity of damage and considerations by two different tire companies regarding the damage to my car on the right side. And I would like to have those items reviewed and considered. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As I indicated, we don't engage in debate on these items that are not agendized. But I believe this was agendized at an earlier time?
It is agendized for the six o'clock meeting as a consideration of rejection of claim.
I remember seeing that. Okay. And then, once the council takes the action, she is going to be notified by someone.
Correct. And her comments now can be incorporated into the discussion at that time.
Very good. Thank you. Next card that I have is Mr. Robert Larve.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council and staff members. Most of you know who I am. And I know who you guys are. And I want to thank you for having, giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to introduce to you a group of young people that I knew nothing about when I ran for city council last year. Squadron one-twenty of the Civil Air Patrol based here in Victorville at SCLA. I wish I knew about them before, and now I do. And I've become a part of them this past year. And I brought them here tonight to introduce them to you and let you know that Squadron one-twenty, based here in Victorville, is here at the city's service for any needs that the city may deem necessary. And I just wanted to say that we wanted to thank Keith Messler for helping us with the recent problem, which is we were informed about two and a half weeks ago by the Army that we were no longer going to be welcome in the hangar that we share with them there at SCLA, and we're going to be displaced. We have found somewhere to meet temporarily, but in light of what we do with the young people in the Civil Air Patrol, we'd like to stay at SCLA. And I wanted to bring them here to share a little bit with you and plead to you guys to consider what you can to help us out. We are a nonprofit, and we do not really have any money to go somewhere and pay rent. But I think hearing from some of these young people would motivate you. When I ran for city council, I met with Captain Yoder. And one of the things that Captain Yoder and I discussed about reducing crime in the city was to have more programs for young people here in Victorville. And that's why I'm really proud to have found out that we do have a Civil Air Patrol squadron here that is, made it its goal to help as many of the young people here in Victorville that can, as well as in the surrounding communities. So, with that, I'll end my comments and allow you to call on the next person in line. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Larve. While we don't inter-intu debate on these items that are not agendized, I'm sure that Mr. Messler will be talking with our city manager, Doug Robinson. He will be talking to us. And if it isn't resolved, I'm sure someone will get back to you. The next card I have, you're going to have to help me with pronouncing Va-Motufa. And if I did not get that right, my apologies. Can you come right down to the microphone, please?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I am Cadet Motufa, and I belong to Voyager Squadron one-twenty. I am fourteen years old. And this past year, I had the privilege of joining Civil Air Patrol, our CAP. The Civil Air Patrol is a nonprofit humanitarian organization, which is an official auxiliary of the United States Air Force. The CAP squadron that I serve under proudly serves our community annually. This year alone, I participated in the annual mall watch, which my squadron has been doing for the past seventeen years. I also patrolled the annual San Bernardino County Fair, as well as assisted in numerous citywide events. The CAP program, it has disciplined me to give my undivided attention and my time to serve my Victorville community, my state, especially my country. The CAP has taught me self-discipline, how not to be afraid, and especially self-worth. Legally, I am disabled. You can't tell by looking at me, but I have severe anaphylaxis, which I've had since birth. Up until I joined the squadron, I've never really challenged myself to anything other than the normal teenage activities. Honestly, I don't think I ever got the chance to. The CAP does not discriminate against anyone with disabilities. In fact, the program allowed me to participate in all of their programs. Some of the programs that CAP offers is the Aerospace Education Member Program, which educates in the fascinating subject and curriculum of aerospace. CAP also offers O-Rides, which is a program that allows cadets to get the hands-on training to fly a CAP plane. This past March, 2013, I got to experience what very few teens my age get to do. I had the privilege of taking control of a Civil Air Patrol aircraft under the guidance and supervision of a licensed pilot. Wow. Words do not explain. By the time I graduate high school, I plan to have obtained pilot's license and one day hope to work towards flying a military aircraft. The CAP offers several scholarships that pay for these many costs. We as cadets have to take advantage of it. And US Council members have to make the choice to give us that chance. Several cadets have taken advantage of this program, but one stands out to me in particular.
Is that it?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next individual is David, I think it's W-E-M-Y-S-S, what, Weems. You want to come forward, please? Also Squadron one-twenty?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is David Weems, and I am a cadet of the Civil Air Patrol. And one of my goals for my life is to attend the Air Force Academy out in Colorado. And being around planes and flying is really interesting to me. And one of the things that I've heard most by going to all of the academy forums that we've had is that I should join the Civil Air Patrol. And I never really knew what that was until I researched it. And then, I attended my first meeting, and I figured out what they were all about. And what they're about is helping the community and also teaching aerospace, which is both what I'm interested in. And I think that the Civil Air Patrol is going to bring me up, and not only me, but everyone else who attends. And I think that it can bring us up past what other people think we can do, and we can help more people. And I would just like to say thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I am Cadet Mariah Muller. I am with the Civil Air Patrol, Voyager Squadron one-twenty. I'm here to talk about our current predicament. As you heard, as Robert Larve has said, we are kind of out of place right now. I personally joined Civil Air Patrol because I am looking to be a pilot in the Air Force. I am working on getting my pilot's license right now. Civil Air Patrol has taught me a lot about aircrafts just by seeing them land at the SCLA airport. Most of the airplanes are helicopters or jets that are there. We always get some background information from our senior members, and it's always interesting to me to hear it. Because it's one of my things that I recently had gotten into as a young person. CAP teaches you to have excellence in all you do. It helps you volunteer for community service. It helps you have integrity, and most of all, respect. All of these items make good leaders. Civil Air Patrol is there to help the teens become good, strong leaders for the new coming years. Two of our senior members, Lieutenant Rollings and Colonel Rollings, have turned out the first woman pilot in a previous group that they have had. And I'm hoping that they can keep me on the right track to become a pilot, so I know Civil Air Patrol will help me. It's been a big part of my life so far, even though I'm only a recent member. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Cadet Nicole Weems. I'm fourteen years old. I currently join the Civil Air Patrol because I'm looking to make more of my life. And a bunch of teenagers now are currently wrapped up at home, playing video games, talking to friends, you know? And I feel that the Civil Air Patrol helps you get yourself out there and learn more about your community. And I would like us to be able to stay at SCLA, because it's really cool to be able to see all the planes. And you learn so much more when you're able to actually experience them and not just see them in textbooks or on videos. And the Civil Air Patrol has actually done a lot in our community. They actually put out one of the first female pilots. And I would like to kind of go towards that, too. I'm looking into, either going into the services, one of the service academies, or trying to get to law school. And I feel like this is going to help me a lot, because everyone's telling us, go to the Civil Air Patrol. It helps you with all of that. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm the mother of Flight Sergeant Ian Herrera. And I was here to speak on behalf of, who is not in attendance, Colonel Geiger, Robert Geiger. So I'm just going to read his message. Ladies and gentlemen, Squadron one-twenty, Civil Air Patrol was born on George Air Force some forty-three years ago. Since that time, the squadron has been the model in aviation education for young men and women of the high desert. During these years, the squadron has been a leader in helping to train both cadets and seniors in aviation education. It has been through these efforts of adult members of the Civil Air Patrol that has allowed the squadron to be involved in search and rescue, plus the training of cadets in flight orientation courses. And in many instances, leading to many of our young people into obtaining their own pilot's license. Recently, we have been informed that we must leave the base that we grew up in. We need your help for us to stay on the base and continue with the education of younger people and with adults. It is our major wish that we do not have to close the doors of this squadron. We have been a major part of the youth organization in the high desert for many years. We want to remain on the base and hope that you will help us accomplish this goal. We would be willing to meet with you and discuss our situation as soon as possible. This organization has the potential of being the center of Southern California logistic area, area search and rescue hub within Civil Air Patrol. We can build our squadron to form a central point for not only cadet training, but young adults from other squadrons as well. We ask for your assistance in keeping this important squadron alive here in the high desert and on the base. Thank you for allowing me to comment on your problem.
Thank you. Herrera, is it Ian or Lan?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sergeant Ian Herrera. And I'm, what my goal is in the future is to be in the Army. All I want to pretty much do is just to protect my country. And Civil Air Patrol helps me how to get there. And I just want to see other cadets try to get to military branches in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening to the council and Mr. Mayor. My concern today is concerning the community. My name is Robert Richardson, and I moved to Victorville about twenty-two years ago. And in my entry here, the reason why I moved because of the neighborhood that I lived in was just terrifying. Since about twenty years now, Victorville is starting to have that same central condition. The renters and investors, that's renting to renters, they're not concerned about who they rent to. And because of this, we have rat infestations. We have dog feces and cat feces on properties that next door to those are renting. We have people that speed through the neighborhoods, disregard the children in the neighborhood. And it's just horrendous. If you go to animal control and you voice opinion concerning the feces that next-door neighbors allow when they have animals to just without cleaning up anything. The problem also, I know you know, that Victorville have wind surges constantly. And when neighbors don't clean up dog feces and cat feces, that stuff dry out along with dust that these dogs and these cats are living in. And that stuff get airborne. And people are breathing this without knowing that they're breathing it. That's a terrible concern. I'm all so concerned about the heavy music that the young people feel as though that they can play music at any time as loud as they can. And they're starting to buy amplifiers and speakers and put it in the cars, like the neighborhoods that I moved away from in Linwood. And it's hard to speak to them.
Mr. Richardson, you need to drop it up. You have ten seconds.
Okay. It's hard to have any kind of dialogue. So my concern is with my neighborhood and these conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sure someone will be contacting you, Mr. Richardson. As for the individuals that are here that spoke regarding Squadron one-twenty, thank you very much for coming out. It was nice to hear from you. Congratulations. We're proud of you. I'm sure you're going to be hearing from our city manager on that. I have no further cards from anyone to speak at this time. Is there anyone to speak? If not, we will, are we ready to adjourn to executive session? Mr. Attorney, you need to brief us on that declaration.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have four closed session items tonight. Three for the city council, one for the airport authority. They are all existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. The titles of the litigation, along with the case numbers, are all set forth fully on the agenda to relate to the SEC versus City of Victorville. The third is Shadowview Corporation versus City of Victorville. And the fourth is City of Victorville versus Lakeside Equipment Company. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of closed session or at the commencement of the seven, six o'clock meeting.
At this time, we will adjourn to closed session at 5:24.
Change the agenda and get public comment put behind closed session.
It's not an expensive, high-income neighborhood. It's just, it's sort of an oversight.
I took the sky.
Oh, okay. So we don't have to do that?
Not going to remove it.
Okay. All right. Go with what I'm doing, sir.
Yeah, we're going to open A1, continue it. He wanted to get rid of it because someone wants to get rid of the planning.
Oh.
The planning permission action, so.
We have convened from our executive session, our closed session, and we are in regular session at this point. Madam Clerk, roll call, please. He's, he'll be in shortly.
Here.
Here.
Here. At this time, we're going to have the invocation and pledge allegiance. The invocation by Mr. Doug Robinson. Our police chief will immediately follow with the pledge. Sam can remain standing for a while.
Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing everyone out to the meeting safely tonight. We ask that you, to guide the leaders of this city, leaders of this county, the state, and our nation, and of the world, as you always do. Everything is ordained by you, and we thank you for the guidance that you provide us. Father, we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Right hand over your heart. Join me as we recite the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Sam, sorry for being so personal, ladies and gentlemen. Sam Lucia is our police chief. At this time, I'm going to come down front. We have some presentations to make. We have a presentation of a plaque to the city council from Danielle Pollard, American Cancer Society. We have a presentation that I will make, a military banner to the family of Matthew Leteror, and city council proclamation to Joseph Carl. So if I will come down front, and Danielle Pollard, you'll join me?
On November 5th and 7th, as you know, we were here enrolling in our CPS-3 study to celebrate more birthdays, hopefully, and end the world of cancer. With the support of the city of Victorville, we greatly appreciate everything that you guys have done. With your help, we were able to enroll seventy-eight people into the study that hopefully our children and our grandchildren will see a future with no cancer.
It's my pleasure as the mayor of the city to accept this on behalf of the city of the city council, and thank you very, very much. Mr. Joseph Carl, would you come down? I'm going to tell you that I presented this to Joe earlier, but I felt, because of his position with the city and his service to the city and to this country, that it was important enough to do this again. So it was great pleasure, I'm going to bore you once again and read this. Whereas Joe Zaccaro began his service with the Victorville Fire Department as a paid-call firefighter on April 1, 1980, was hired as a fire prevention specialist in May, 1990, was promoted to senior fire safety specialist, and then deputy fire marshal. Joe then transferred to the San Bernardino County Fire Department in August of 2009, serving as a fire marshal for the city of Victorville. And whereas during his time with the city, Joe was recognized as Victorville Firefighter of the Year, 1986, San Bernardino County Chiefs Association's Overachiever of the Year in 1996, and as the annual inductee into the Victor Valley Alumni Hall of Fame, 2010. Whereas Joe graduated Victor Valley College with a degree in electronics and another in fire technology, and holds many state fire certificates, including fire officer, fire investigator, fire prevention specialist. He also taught fire technology classes at Victor Valley College for twenty-six years. Whereas in 1996, Joe re-enlisted back in the Air Force Reserves as a combat photographer. I'm going to take a break. If you don't know Joe's photography, we do. We appreciate it. He has provided a great service to the city, and we appreciate when he does that. Joe, while he's, during his time there, Joe provided photography documentation of several presidents and article missions, two 9/11 ground zero ceremonies, and was deployed to Africa in support of operations enduring freedom. He received numerous awards, ribbons, and medals, and retired from the Air Force in 2011, serving twenty-two years. Whereas Joe is also a founding member of the Victorville Police and Fire Activities League, board member and past president of the Desert Communities United Way, president-elect of Victor Valley Sunrise Rotary Club, together with his wife, Liz, they own JRZ Photography. So it's with a great deal of pleasure, on behalf of the city, on behalf of the city council, to grant you this proclamation.
Well, I guess that just means I'm old. But I've been around a long time. I enjoyed everything. I've been recently transferred to the Hisperia office, and the supervisor over there came over here. So we just made a transfer, still doing the fire department thing, and still planning for at least another eight years with the department. And got a boxing event tonight. So I'm still doing community service. It's just in my blood. It's just part of me to serve. That's how I started with the community as a paid-call firefighter, and then just blossomed from there. And so, I'm still here. I appreciate everything that we've been through and everything that I've been able to accomplish with the city of Victorville. It's been, it was a long time, a total of thirty-three years with the city. So at first, I was a little hesitant to leave, but I'm enjoying my new, my new office, my new domain, and provide service to the other communities. So, thank you very much, Jim.
The next item that, the next item that I have, this is always a great program that, I'm not sure who started it, but we're very proud of it. We're proud of all of the volunteers that are part of this. And we have tonight a certificate and a military banner unveiling. The banner, you can see on the wall to my left, to your right, Matthew Leteror. Is Matthew here? He's in Afghanistan. God bless him. So this is a special presentation then to his family. And Mrs. Kristy Leteror, Leteror, will you please join me up here? You can all come up. It's fine. And I'm going to read this, because this is very important. Matthew Leteror, is that right? Is that, am I pronouncing that right?
Leteror.
Leteror. Went to school at Victor Valley, Victor High School from ninth and tenth grade, and Encore High School from eleventh and twelfth grade. He graduated 2011 with honors. Matthew joined the military in February 2012. He did basic training at Fort Benning, Georgia. He then completed his AIT schooling in Augusta, Georgia. His MOS is 25Q Multi-Channel Transmission Specialist. I don't know what that means, but I know it's important. Matthew got married to his high school sweetheart, Kim, in August of 2012. They moved to Wilsic, Germany in August 2012. Germany in August 2012. He's been in Afghanistan, ah, told me right here, sorry. He's been in Afghanistan since the end of August 2013. He has a younger brother, Dylan, he also goes to Encore High School, and will be following in his brother's footsteps and joining the military. We will display this banner here that you see on Civic Drive, which is the street out in front of the Civic Center here, City Hall and the county buildings, where it will re, where it will reflect our community pride and respect for the military that we in the city and the citizens of this community has long held, as evidenced by George Air Force Base and the many wonderful people who went through there, who are still here and now make Victor Valley their home. On behalf of the city and the Victorville City Council, I would like to thank you for your son's service and sacrifices to your country, and I'm going to present you this certificate, and the banner will be flown, and we're gonna get a picture, and then I'd like for you to say a few words. Who's gonna be the spokesperson?
First off, I want to say thank you to Monica for making this all happen. I was here a few months ago when her son Bradley was deployed to Afghanistan, and they did this banner program, and I just think it's such a special event that you guys do for our military, and if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have the freedoms that we have. So I just want to say thank you to everybody, and keep them in your thoughts and prayers. My nephew is also in Afghanistan, too, so he'll be deployed for quite a while. So I got two very good family members that are in Afghanistan, so please keep everybody in your thoughts and prayers, and thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, thank you very much. That concludes our presentation. We'll go back to our council. Visions. First item that I have is the appeal hearing, which is A1 on the City Council agenda.
Mayor Cox, would you like first to have the report of closed session?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped you. All right, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had four closed-session items this evening, three of which were City Council items, one of which was an airport authority item. They were all existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, and all of the names of the parties, as well as the case numbers, are set forth fully on the agenda, and at this point, there is no reportable action.
Okay, any other comments for the attorney?
No.
At this time, Madam Clerk, do you want to present the revisions to the council agenda?
The council may... Communication's are...
Okay.
Ingestment.
Okay, thank you. For clarification, when I came in tonight, you're referring to the letter from Briggs Law Corporation and Attachments that I had not seen before? That's, does any of the other members of council have this? Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Counsel for clarification. Somebody's mic is open, being recorded, hopefully. One second, please. Pilot said to the passengers, "Don't worry, it'll clear up on takeoff."
IT is working on the issue right now.
The only reason I'm waiting is because these are recorded, we want to make sure that nothing interferes with that. Are we ready? No. Sure. We can rely on the clerk's notes if we have to, but it's nice to have that recorded. Okay, we're going to move on, and so we may have some background interference, but we're told by the technicians that this is being recorded, it's not going to be a problem. Please bear with us, I don't know, it may help to turn the microphones down or something, but...
And Mr. Mayor, we also have a secondary recording as well, recording device on the dais, just in case.
All right, with no further delay, then, we will open item A1. This is an appeal hearing, called to hear the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of case PLN 13-00011 with adoption of mitigated negative declaration as set forth in resolution 13-061. I have a request from Mr. Corey Briggs to speak on, I believe, A1 and A2. Here we go.
Mayor, clarification, if staff has asked that it be continued, are we, do we still have the public hearing?
Yes, we do. What we will do, and thank you very much, Councilmember Kennedy, for allowing me to clarify that, because of the new information, because staff's response and working with Mr. Briggs, staff has requested a continuance of the item to the December 17 City Council meeting, and what we are required to do, because this is a public hearing, that has, we have sent out the notices and notified everyone. Can you still hear me? Okay, good. We've notified everyone, we've placed the ads, and at this point in time, we will have the hearing, take all the information, but then we will continue the matter. We will not close the hearing, and then, when this comes back on December 17, we will continue with the hearing, and hopefully conclude the hearing at that time, and then the council will make a decision at that time. So we have before us Mr. Corey Briggs.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The only thing I wanted to say in light of the staff's request, said I can't be here on December 17, so if you have questions at that point, I can't, I just, I have a conflict that I can't change. I can be here on January 7 or January 21, and I think you have council meetings on those days, and be happy to be here on one of those days if you're able to accommodate the request.
Certainly consider that. It may be possible.
Mr. Briggs, I, I have one question, I guess. Why is it, and I think this is the third or fourth time I can think of, that your appeal documents come to us at the very last minute?
Because your staff report doesn't come out until Friday afternoon. We work over the weekend, we get it ready on Monday, and we overnight it to you. It's the fastest it can get here. And I would also point out that it was Thanksgiving weekend, and I had a number of out-of-town visitors, but even when it's not a holiday weekend, we work over the weekend.
When was this approved before the Planning Commission? Because that, that argument holds no weight, when you consider when this was approved by the Planning Commission over a month ago. That argument holds absolutely no weight, Mr. Briggs.
And we opposed it at the Planning Commission.
Doesn't matter, I'm just telling you, it holds no weight.
So you're telling me that because of the way we handled it, the Planning Commission, you don't particularly...
You, you've had that information for over a month.
And we submitted our opposition at the Planning Commission, and we filed the appeal.
Why did we get it today?
Because we got your staff report not until last Friday afternoon. Actually, it wasn't even then. I think it was Wednesday, but we had Thanksgiving. So if you guys give us the information faster, we can turn it around faster.
I think for staff, please clarify that toward the council, you know, not tonight, but before the next meeting, it's important to understand those chain of events, and we do note that Thursday was Thanksgiving, and we will answer that question.
Mayor Cox, on an appeal hearing, they can submit information up until the close of the hearing, so...
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
An appellant can provide information right up until the close of the, of the public hearing.
Well, I certainly understand that. I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing the right to do it. It, we hear in several appeal hearings in the course of a period of some months, and generally speaking, those appeals are filed in plenty of time, and we have a chance to be prepared for them and so on. These, with Mr. Briggs, it seems to be a habit that his always seemed to lead to a delay of another couple of weeks in getting things resolved. But that's, that's the system, it's permitted. I just, thank you for your answer.
Okay. I haven't, not gonna close the public hearing at this time. Do we have another speaker? I noticed we had someone coming up. Was it on this item or not? I don't want to cut anybody out.
No, it's...
Not on this item?
I don't believe so.
We have no one else speaking on this matter. I will continue this, because we have notified everyone. That's not to say it will not be continued after December 17, did I say? But it certainly will be continued until that time, which at that time, we will be taking up the matter again. You have on the record, it's not being available, and requesting a consideration by the council for our first meeting in January, if possible. That will be noted, and if there are questions, it can be handled between our staff, our attorney, and you, we will attempt to do that also. No further comments, we will continue the matter. Does this take an action of the council, or a declaration by the chair?
Declaration of the chair is to continue the item.
It is then hereby continued.
There's a request as part of the revisions to withdraw item A2 and the companion item, which is D9.
A2 and what?
D9.
D9?
Yes.
To simply withdraw?
Simply withdraw.
Does that then negate any request that they have made, any legal requirements to advertise? It's just done? They withdrawn it from the agenda, it won't appear again?
That is...
Or is it understood to be appearing again at December or January?
They have withdrawn the item, so if somebody wanted to speak, you could actually, if you wanted to hold a public hearing in an abundance of caution, the problem is, there's no, no action to be taken at this point. The item's been withdrawn from the agenda.
I think because it's on the agenda and listed as an appeal hearing, I will ask if anyone that's a principal involved in that appeal hearing would like to come forward at this time. If not, we will accept...
Item's withdrawn, it won't be put on another agenda at this point.
The item is totally withdrawn?
Correct.
By the applicant?
That is correct.
A2 and D9?
Correct.
The public still gets to speak to the item on the agenda?
Yes, well, it, I, that, that was kind of the question. It's been advertised as an appeal hearing, and when they withdraw it, I, that was...
I would recommend opening and having the hearing, and then closing the hearing.
Okay. Then at that point, then, we will open that hearing, since it has been advertised as an appeal hearing. This is from Sterling, and at this time, I will open that hearing.
Thank you. The, the public gets to speak even if you withdraw it, under the Brown Act, because it's an agenda item, even if you don't do the public hearing. I just want to make sure that everybody saw the letter from Sterling, and that it's the City Council's action to accept that letter. I think you've had...
I'm sorry, it's the City Council's what?
Action to accept their letter of withdrawal. I don't think it's something that the chair can just note. If they're withdrawing it, I think the City Council needs to concur that you're accepting the request in their letter.
Well, that, yes, it was the intent for the, if it was going to be continued, it would be my intent as the chair to simply continue the matter, but since it's being withdrawn, this is going to take an action of the whole council to acknowledge it.
Yeah, I, I just think you all have to say, yeah, we accept the letter, and, and then it's done.
Sure.
Thank you.
We have no...
Legal clarification on that? I mean, if they have withdrawn the appeal, how is it...
They're, it's their request, Mr. City Attorney.
It is their request. Typically, when an appellant wants to withdraw an item, it's up to this council to put items on the agenda, or the city manager to put items on the agenda. So the City Council prerogative is to, I think each, each member has usually a vote of three to put something on the agenda, so I would recommend a vote to withdraw the item.
I would concur, and since the applicant has made a request to withdraw the item, we, we note their request, and I would like a motion for the minutes, to be safe.
Don't move.
Motion, we have a second. Don't have a second, it'll stay on the agenda.
Okay.
Do we have a motion, a second, to acknowledge their letter and withdraw the item?
Could I, could I just get some clarification, Mr. Mayor? In the past, we've had staff withdraw items from the agenda on several occasions. We've never voted on it before. I don't understand why we're asked, being asked to vote on this tonight.
My understanding is because this was an appeal hearing.
Well, the item was an appeal hearing by the appellant. The appellant is asking for the withdrawal, but the fact is, you've noticed a public hearing on it, you should, in the, to err on the side of caution, I'd recommend having a vote on it, having it withdrawn by a three, or unanimous, or a majority vote.
We have a motion, a second? Who?
Okay, I need a second, please.
Councilmember, buy a second.
Oh, boy. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckren voting no.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number One on the regular agenda, consideration of Chapter 7 Business License Omitted from the Code Amendments and Development Code 13-00004. This was approved by the City Council on November 5, 2013, so therefore, it's a public hearing, but it's really a correction. Is that correct, staff? Okay, thank you. I don't have any letters, cards or letters to speak on the item. It is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number One from the regular agenda. I have no cards, I have no one coming forth. With no objections, I will close the public hearing. Here's ready for a motion.
I'd like to read the ordinance.
Oh, sorry, gotta head in.
Ordinance Number 2305, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council, City of Victorville, Approving Chapter 7 Business License Omitted from Amendment Development 13-0004, A Code Amendment Amending and Incorporating Title V Business License and Regulations into Title 16 and Other Relevant Titles of the Victorville Municipal Code." Start motion?
We have, we need a motion?
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckren, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries, and to introduce, to wait for the reading and introduce Ordinance Number 2305.
Thank you. The next public hearing, item number two, the public hearing, a presentation of Ordinance Number 2308, establishing speed zones on certain streets. Any questions from the City Council to staff, or any further comments from staff before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, I open the hearing on Ordinance Number 2308. Questions? There is no one to speak. I will close the hearing. There are no further questions.
Okay.
Would you read the ordinance, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance of the City of Victorville, establishing speed zones upon certain streets in said city, and amending section 12.20.020 of the Victorville Municipal Code in title "Decrease of State Law Maximum Speed on Various Streets."
Motion?
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Mayor Potem McEckren. Motion carries to introduce ordinance number two-three-zero-eight and wait for the reading.
Next item is the consent calendar.
Read the title.
Oh, I thought you read the title.
You're right. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt. This consent calendar contains twelve agenda items. Are there any questions from council members or any requests to put any of those items from the consent calendar? If not, we have a motion to approve items consent one through twelve.
Motion by Mayor Potem McEckren, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries to approve the consent calendar.
For now, it's the city council, Agenda Item Number One. Council's regular meeting, written communications, request by Gold West Mobile Home Park to waive the development fees for the construction of nine hundred and seventy-five square feet gym workout building. Staff, I have-
Mr. Mayor.
More than one question on this.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a very brief comment by me, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Borchett to get up to explain a few things about this item. The Mobile Home Park is essentially a private development. When we, as staff, looked at this item, certain fees that are charged normally under the municipal code to all new development, really, there was not a nexus. They're mostly development impact fees. Essentially, the very small building that the owner is wishing to build for a workout facility is available only to the residents of the Mobile Home Park. It's not going to generate new traffic from people outside of his Mobile Home Park. So staff didn't believe that the development impact fees would need to be charged. So that's where the recommendation comes from. The way the code is written is simply that all new buildings would be charged this fee. I didn't really consider new buildings that don't actually have an impact. So that's why this had to come before the city council with the recommendation from staff. As I understand it, the layout of this item created a little bit of confusion as to which fees were being recommended to remain in place versus which ones were being recommended to be waived because there really is no true impact. For that discussion, I'd ask Mr. Borchett to come up, just to walk you through the agenda item as far as which fees need to remain in place because there actually is a purpose and which ones do not. Very specifically, though, the fees from outside agencies, whether they schools or in this case, BBWRA, are not being recommended to be waived. We can't waive those anyway. When I spoke with the developer of this project, I suggested that if he wanted any of those fees waived, he would need to go to those agencies, not to us. We are simply, we charge those on their behalf and pass those fees on. So Chris, if you could walk through the fees that-
Sure. They were, their request was for every fee to be waived. And in the staff report, I was just trying to provide some justification for ones that we thought were able to do that. Permit fees, we wouldn't recommend waiving those. As Doug mentioned, BBWRA fees are merely passed through from the city to BBWRA. We do not keep those fees. The sewer capacity fee, engineering was okay with that because they're not adding any additional flows to the system. Also with diff facilities, that fee pays for future parks, community buildings, city buildings. They would, they're adding their own building. They're in their own community. Same with police and fire. The addition of the small building, not going to create a very minimal impact to those services. And then the largest fee is roads. And engineering was okay with the waiving of that fee as well because the, of the building is not going to be bringing in people from outside of the project. The people live inside the project, the trips, the capacity on the streets is not going to be impacted by the project. As Doug mentioned, there was discussion, I think from Ms. Vias, about whether this would set a precedent. And I asked our building official, Kevin Collins, to, is there any other instance that you can think of that a building would be built where someone would ask the same thing? And we couldn't think of a single one. A community building in an apartment complex or a clubhouse building in an apartment complex was as close as we could get, but that building could be used by people from outside of the complex. If you decide to reserve the community building or the clubhouse in your apartment complex, you could invite your family and have your whole family over for a birthday party or something. That is bringing, creating trips into the project area. Whereas this project, the idea that somebody's going to invite people in to use the gym at a small, this small of a nature, seems unlikely. That was the rationale.
But they are still required to pay plumbing fee, mechanical, electrical, building, have inspections?
Correct.
Okay. And take out building permits for that and have it inspected each step of the way?
Correct.
Questions from council members?
I don't necessarily have any questions. I think what I'm concerned about is that, I think we need, if we're going to do this, we need to change the code rather than have individuals coming to the council on individual basis asking for leniency on fees. So either we make it clear on the code where, you know, gyms or, you know, private uses within the facility, we change it. But to come before the council and ask for leniency and then we give it to one and not the other, and what I was concerned about is, you know, is this going to continue to happen? And I was concerned about the fees for BBWRA because I know there's a joint powers of agreement, so if the city waived those fees, they would still owe BBWRA due to the agreement. And then it led me to believe that we've forgiven connection fees to the sewer for some people that had, you know, issues with their houses upside down and that sort of thing. Does that open a can of worms for BBWRA? Do we go back and does the city owe BBWRA those fees? So that's why I was concerned. What are we doing here? So I recommend that we either change the language in the fee structure rather than, because I think it creates a favoritism or it just doesn't look right, that the council does it for some and not for others. Because we've had St. Mary's, who's a nonprofit, you know, creating hundreds of jobs for Victorville, and, you know, we didn't waive any fees for them, you know? But then again, that's completely different because they are going to be utilizing roads and we're going to be needing to, you know, developmental impact fees on them as well. So my recommendation is, is that we either change the language in the code and rather than continue to see people individually and be making these types of decisions because I think it gets very sketchy.
And we actually talked about that as staff, should we change the code? Because it would be nice to have a little bit of flexibility in there for such a unique situation. I also spoke with the city attorney about it earlier today, and, you know, with everyone involved that's been with the city for many, many years, no one could come up with another project that would need this kind of a waiver. It's strictly because it is a gated community and only their residents are going to be using this facility, so there's no new impacts. We couldn't come up with any scenario at all. So our first thought was, let's change the code so that we can handle these things administratively. But it doesn't appear there's even a need to do that, assuming this moves forward, because we don't think this would ever come back to the council again or to the staff again. Certainly, we can make a code adjustment to allow for some flexibility with staff. In a lot of ways, it's easier on the staff to have a very hard code that simply says, no, all buildings.
Well, I agree that it raises some interesting questions, and staff certainly should look at it because I'm betting it will come back. We can't think of why or when, but surely we have more than one Mobile Home Park or more than one closed community where something similar is going to occur. It makes sense when everybody believes that government is in the individual's pocket, that we have a rule that applies equally to everyone and not give the impression that there are special people who get special, special fees waived and other people have to pay it. We want to make sure that it's equally enforced throughout the city, and one way to do that is to make whatever changes are necessary to the code that assures that. Now, I do believe that if staff went through the whole thing again, they would probably make the determination not to charge it to begin with, but we want to make sure that the flexibility is there. If there's a question, that it can come to the council. That's why we're here. If there is absolutely no question, after reading the code, that the staff can make that. But right now, it must be a gray area, and that needs to be corrected.
It's, it's, it's actually not a gray area. That's why it's before you tonight, is because it's a very black and white area. It says all buildings must, we must charge the fee. So if someone wants to do something that is different than what the code says, they have to come to the city council. This is a relatively small issue. I don't think the code amendment would be substantial. It would, you know, speak to the fact that it's a gated community and that whatever facilities they're building would be available for the use only of the residents of that gated community. It was simply a matter of, we didn't, couldn't think of another instance where it would come up again, but if it's the council's desire, certainly we can add that flexibility into the code, the next code amendment that we do.
Well, I can understand that all buildings, if I decide to put an eight-by-ten or a six-by-nine building in the backyard for storage, there's going to be electrical or plumbing that we have permits and they do that. But if you have new development where it's going to add traffic or people, that's a different situation. I'm not sure that it's even appropriate to say all buildings. What's a building? What if I buy it from local hardware store?
Yes, I do a building permit. Anything under, I believe it's a hundred square feet, maybe a hundred and twenty square feet, doesn't qualify.
It seems like these are sensible rationales for waiving the fees in this circumstance. And I would think anytime somebody came to the council and asked us to waive a fee based on a sensible rationale, we should consider that. This isn't preferential treatment. We're not helping out a developer because we like him. But I think, I think there's got to be some flexibility that allows us the opportunity to waive fees if we think it's appropriate. But my question, one question I wanted to ask was, what if I build a, if I have a big enough lot and decide to build a grandmother's apartment, a separate structure, she's living in a part of the house and we want to give her more space, so we're going to build a granny apartment in the back, not open to the public, probably not going to have any police, fire, or sewage consequences? Is that something that might be comparable?
Yes, that would, because it's tied to the building and the use could change. When you sell the property, it could be rented out. And then the roads will be impacted, the systems, the sewer's already being impacted with the mother-in-law. So absolutely, it is.
So that would not be one where you would waive fees?
Who addition, though, on a home doesn't generate more-
Correct.
Development impact?
Oh, it doesn't?
No.
Can I-
A second, a second-
A separate unit does.
Mr. McEckren?
Yeah, can I ask a question? Okay, so I own an insurance agency, and let's just say my lot's big enough, and I want to add on a building to put in a daycare for my employees' children. And I come to you and I say, I want my fees waived. Are you going to waive them? Because those are people that already work for me. So there's no impact to the traffic.
It would come before you for that request. If you could argue that-
But see, that's why, that's why I think we're saying that there's got to be some change to the code. You can't just say all or none, because what, right now, what you're asking us to do is something that is unprecedented in waiving fees, that's never been done before. And next thing I know, I'm going to have the BIA breathing down my back going, well, we want you to, you know, defer or waive development impact fees for us. I just, I think that we're, this is a very slippery slope. And again, if I tomorrow or any other office use came into you and said, I want to put in a daycare facility, I'm going to build a separate building, why wouldn't we waive their fees too?
If I could, just to try to give you some comfort, in ten years, the only time this has come before the council was for a mausoleum that was at a cemetery, where we don't charge diff fees for plots anyway. So the building of a mausoleum, the council agreed, there's no need to charge diff fee. Other than that, BIA or anyone else has not brought something forward. There have been a couple of, within the discretion of the director or myself, I have taken the liberty to do common sense exchanges, such as the Costco relocation and transferring diff fees and diff fee credit for buildings that change sizes or some, a situation such as you're speaking. What I would suggest, if that's where you're going just to give comfort, would be that the language in their state that if found to have absolutely no impact to the streets, the sewer system, et cetera, et cetera, then the city, the zoning administrator may waive the fees. And that they would have to make a finding, and in the code, they could put those findings in there. That would give you comfort and that would give him a roadmap on how to do it. What I wouldn't feel comfortable with is just giving the discretion over to someone because then it's even worse than five people having discretion if one person has that. So what I'd suggest is that there be a couple of findings in there. No impacts to roads, no impacts to this, no impacts to that. And if he can find that, then he does so on an item such as this. And it should come up once or twice every ten years, if that's the case. And if you see that it's happening more, then you go to the zoning administrator and find out why. But that's how I would suggest, a minor modification just to what's not in there, not the fee structure, not anything else, just the paragraph that says exactly the sentence that he just stated, followed by a sentence that fees may be waived if there's proven to be absolutely no impact to these items by the zoning administrator. And then he can check with engineering, with streets, with everything like that, get a consensus, and then feel comfortable signing it off.
And in that case, I would be fine. I just want to make sure that as we go forward, it doesn't set some sort of precedent that we gave this particular owner of this park some preferential treatment.
I would also recommend that if it be done, because of the cost of advertising and the public hearings and for zone changes, is an eighth-page ad, I think, or a quarter-page ad, that it be done with the next update, code update. Not the comprehensive one, but with all of the little fixes that come up quarterly probably.
I would make, with council's permission, oh, I'm sorry, one other suggestion. If we are collecting fees for any other entities and we're requesting to waive those fees for any reason, if we don't notify the, those entities, we should. So they will understand why they were waived or not waived. We do collect fees for other people. We don't, do we collect for schools, for example, or do they go to the school and bring their certificate?
They go to the school and come back with a receipt.
So we don't have anything, some collect their own, we collect for some people. We would notify them, the procedure we went through.
We won't, we will not waive any other agency's fees.
Yeah, we don't, we don't-
We don't have the authority.
Otherwise, as Councilmember Vias said, we would then be liable for those fees and we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that.
Even the mausoleum had to go to the school and BBWRA.
They would have to go to those entities.
They have to go there.
Yes.
I have a question. I have an issue where they say in the staff rec that they think that the police won't be needed. But how many times do we have issues at, you know, our parks and recs where our clubhouses or gymnasiums are broken into and there's issues there? I mean, and police get involved with police reports and, you know, fingerprints and forensics and whatever else. So I find it hard to believe that the police wouldn't be involved in that. And then also, anytime that we have new construction, that's how cities work. That's how we get our fees. That's how we build our parks. And that's how we keep our roads. And if we get into the precedence of continuing to waive fees and we're just now getting, I mean, we're not doing well, I mean, but we're doing better. And to consider waiving fees right now, I'm not saying raise fees, but I'm also against waiving fees because that's how we keep our parks and our recs up with new construction. Am I correct? I mean, do we have so much money that we can just throw it and say, you know, so I, and then, and then one other thing. What if, you know, how many times do we have gym memberships and we don't go to the gym? They decide, you know what, we're going to turn this into a clubhouse so we can invite guests over. Then what about our road impacts? Is there anything stopping them from turning it into a clubhouse because nobody's using the gym?
The questions you ask are good questions. The issue is, this is your decision. We don't have all the answers. If we wanted to stick our necks out, we would have signed it off. They have the authority per the code or the right to come to you. So this is completely your vote. What I will tell you is-
They could change it from a gym to a clubhouse if nobody uses the gym, right?
But they can't bring outsiders in. It's still a closed community. They would have to, they would have to, they would have to come back to us to get the permission.
You can have a closed community and give a party code out so that they can come and use a clubhouse, correct?
It could happen.
So now we have impacts to our roads.
I, and I, I think what was stated was that, or at least if not in the report verbally- verbally, Chris stated that it had minimal impact on police and fire. Or it could have the minimal. This is the small, I mean, this is, we don't want to set precedents either. Having gone through 10 years of, you know, D fees being reduced by prior councils repeatedly, year after year, this is a minimal, minimal, minimal exception. Do I think it's okay just because of that? No. But what I'm saying is, this, this isn't going to help or hurt us. It's a decision for tonight. I think the discussion is good, and we should take it back and provide a process for you to review in the future. But this needs, this is just a vote tonight for this one item.
And I'm, I'm ready to vote.
And we will, we will, I will tell you this, before another item like this comes forward, if we haven't brought in a code amendment forward, we will bring that code amendment to the same meeting, or hold the item until that code amendment. So that this doesn't happen again without the code amendment, and you will have the right to review the code amendment and make any changes to the criteria that you want.
And I agree with you. I think to give staff discretion is dangerous as well, so it is probably better like, like
We don't, believe me, we don't want it, especially after this discussion.
I mean, it sounds like a joke, but that's really the decision that
Uh huh, it is true.
that the staff came to, is they'd rather not have it.
No.
Because then all the pressure is on them, from the developers, from someone coming saying, you know, "You need to do this, and here's why. And if you don't, then I'm going to go to the city manager, and if he doesn't, then I'm going to go to the city council." And it ends up here.
And that may be decided, again, bringing forth criteria, but at least have the criteria, because we won't take the authority without the criteria.
So I would like to take back my comments about changing the code. I think it should come to the council, and we should decide if it need, if staff thinks it needs to be waived.
And just to give you a little bit of the background, the thought on the police was that the community, it has a clubhouse building right next door to it where they're putting this one. They haven't had issues with break-ins, or graffiti, or vandalism or anything. So that's what, that was, all the staff thought was on that, was that adding this building with gym equipment inside of it, doesn't seem like it's going to be a big attraction for vandals or thieves to steal stuff. So that, that was the justification.
My understanding is that they use a portion of the clubhouse, they're going to, I don't know how many feet away, move them out, but it's the same people, same residents. It isn't open to the outside. It's a private club. Am I correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Because if there was any way that they could open it to the public, or even if they suddenly had a facility where now everybody gets to invite their friends and neighbors as a guest, I'd be opposed to it. I think they should pay the fees. But if it's simply to make it more convenient for existing members who live there, and there are restrictions that indicate that, I think staff has an obligation to see that that assurance is in that permit somewhere. Because we don't want to be making a decision whichever way we go, six, eight months from now, find out there's a problem created because we didn't dot the i's and cross the t's, very clearly for existing members, no new people. They add new spaces, they add additional people, additional dwelling units, should charge all the fees. But I have a hard time charging fees for the same people when, under most normal circumstances, they would have paid the fees. Especially if I can add a bedroom onto the house and not have to charge fees. That, never mind.
It was interesting during my discussion with the park manager, he brought up something that, we didn't put in the staff report, but one argument that he brought up, and I don't mean to try to argue their case, was that, you know, to the extent that any of their residents are currently using workout facilities that are outside of their gates, he believed that this could actually have a betterment, because there would be less vehicular traffic using our streets to get to whatever club they're currently going to, if they're going over to the new end shape or wherever. So, you know, it's, it's definitely a complicated issue, but it is also a very unique issue.
I didn't have a card from you, but yeah, just, we will call on you just one minute. We're having this discussion, but then I'll call on you. Everyone gets a chance to speak. Any more questions for the council members? Step right up, sir. Come to the microphone.
I hope you all had a good turkey day, and I hope you have a great Christmas.
Thank you.
I don't, what, the fee, is that for the, to work the city council, I mean, the city to work on their building and everything else? Or since it's on their own private property, why are we charging a fee to build on their own private property? Is that just in the thing that we have set up here for the, for the city of Victorville?
Well, anytime that you have electrical, or mechanical, or plumbing, or anything like that, you do pay the fees, no matter what it's for, whether it's private, an addition, it's only
Well, let me say this, Your Honor.
It's only the development fees.
Yeah, oh, okay, it's a development fee. All right. Now, look, let's don't become like the federal government with so many regulations and fees that we cannot survive as a community. Because remember, the community, the people in the community are the closest to the government, and the local government should be the most powerful and the most trustworthy. So I just was curious about that. And then I'll make my other two comments in a minute when I have my time, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, there's no further comments from staff or questions of staff. Are there any other comments from the council members? At this point in time, then we have a request before the city council. It's been duly discussed. We've considered the pros and cons. Chair's open for motion.
And the motion is?
To approve or deny waiving the development fees for the construction of a 975 square foot gym workout building. This is a request that they have made to the city council, Goulas Mobile Home Park, and it's up to the council to make the determination to collect all the new construction fees, or to collect the, or to waive the development fees as outlined in the staff report.
I think it would be helpful if the motion specified which fees you were going to, if you wanted to waive, and also that the motion be based on the fact and the findings that this is an incredibly unique situation, based on the representations, that it's not going to be used by other people.
Well, the reason that I said in the staff report, because they do pay some fees, and the request is not to waive those. If I understand that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. It is listed in what could be a confusing manner, so let me clarify that the fees that staff is recommending be waived would be the sewer capacity fee, and all of the development impact fees. The other fees, to include the permit fees and the BBWRA fee, would be collected.
That's why
That's the staff recommendation.
Yes.
And my motion is to waive those fees specified in the staff report.
You have a motion to waive the fees specified in the staff report. Do we have a second? I'm going to second the motion. We can build it up or down.
You didn't second it?
Click it.
I did it for you. Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Cox.
I'll call for the vote.
Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Okay. Now, before we leave this, we had a very good discussion. A lot of items were raised. I think staff has paid careful attention. We will hear from staff later on this if they have any new ideas, if there are any changes.
Yes, this will be part of just our routine quarterly update to, to our code.
I really do think this is unique. On the other hand, we have to make sure that we protect the public goodwill. Item two. This is asbestos abatement and demolition project ES-14-030, bids and development department recommendations for award.
Motion by Mayor Paton McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item three, the request to approve an additional appropriation of $83,000, authorize the purchase of materials, and pre-approved the award of contract Arizona Pipeline Company for the installation of natural gas infrastructure. Any questions? No questions of staff? No
Motion by Mayor Paton McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number four, we started out by changing the times from regular council meeting seven to six, and also, this has seemed to work out very good. And so, what exactly is this request, then, Madam Clerk? Is it, does it take an ordinance or a resolution?
I think it's to ask for staff, or, sorry, council input as to whether or not you want to put a specific item on the next agenda to make the changes permanent.
Well, that, yeah, it's worked out, but if the council wants to make it permanent, don't they have to take an action, and it's actually a public hearing, going to change the ordinance?
It's not done by ordinance, it's done by resolution.
Okay.
So I think staff is just looking for direction as to whether or not you want to make these changes permanent. They were introduced as an interim measure through the end of the year.
Councilmember, you've heard the, you've seen the staff report. Want to make a motion?
Motion by Mayor Paton McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia.
And my motion is to keep it at six, just so that's clarified.
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item five, this is action for the city council of leasing a former economic development department, EDD, office in area of Assembly of County Superintendent of Schools for $5,565.39 per month. Motion to the council.
I would ask that your motion include a caveat that with additional changes approved by the city manager and city attorney.
You have any idea what those changes are?
They're primarily non-substantive. There are a couple questions about that language on indemnification, that the risk manager and I have some concerns over, we'd like to change.
Non-substantive in the writing of the lease or the amount of money, then?
Correct, it is not a found
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number six, Mr. Metzler, standard lease agreement for building 867 recommends that approve the execution of the standard lease agreement between Pacific Aerospace Resources Technology LLC, a Nevada Limited Corporation, for building 867.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, we're very familiar with Pacific Aerospace Resource Technology, as we've been working with them for several years now, and of course, have worked very closely with them, as they were very helpful and instrumental in working out an arrangement for Boeing, the Boeing company, to actually occupy our largest of new hangars out at the airport. And that transaction is all complete. Boeing is currently active and operating. They just landed a 777 that was delivered last Friday for Air Canada, so they're up and running. And we're seeing Boeing take a much stronger presence at SCLA. But as Pacific Aerospace had worked with us in freeing up that hangar for wide-body aircraft, they've been continuing to do similarly-natured work as it related to letter checks on aircraft. And in fact, the one remaining wide-body hangar that they currently do have has three aircraft in it, currently being worked on, which is a lot of aircraft for that type of a hangar. They've crammed them in there safely, their two MD-80s and 737 for head of state out of South America. So, but notwithstanding that, with the transition of them having to shed the large wide-body hangar, they've had to look towards utilizing the remainder, remaining hangar facilities more efficiently, namely 676 and 683. But interestingly, and with the new leadership that I'll introduce just shortly, with the new leadership, they've actually taken on similarly-natured work, letter checks, a seat check, which is a heavier maintenance on an aircraft, but they're actually getting into the business of doing regional jets as well. And the items before you, both in D6 and D7, are somewhat related. They're dealing with separate properties, but they're both closely related in that these hangars will allow them to expand their maintenance services to accommodate seat checks on Embraer and Bombardier-type regional jets. It'll also provide them with additional storage, warehousing space for their parting-out operations. So in addition to that, they're also looking at adding some additional services, back-shop type maintenance operations. So with that, staff's recommendation, if you wanted to do them both in companion, the recommendation's the same, that we go ahead and approve the lease agreements for building 867 and 685. And I think just a particular note about the specific facilities, 867 is the facility that's being given up by Ten Tanker. Ten Tanker's in there currently. They've been in the process of moving out for some time. They're scheduled to be out completely by December 16th, I believe it is. And I think this agreement is actually set to start the very next day. So as soon as Ten Tanker's out, Pacific Aerospace would like to move in. 685 is the former hangar facility. It's a three-bay hangar facility that was actually occupied by Boeing for their unmanned helicopter program. So that facility's been sitting vacant for some time. We've marketed it, have had a tough time marketing it, but as it turns out, it's been helpful in accommodating the Pacific Aerospace request. In the audience, and they can offer any questions or comments, or, I think for my purpose, just to introduce them, and I'll have them stand up. David Green is the new president of the company. You'd previously known Johan Clausen, but David Green has taken on the reins of that company, and has been a critical and leading part towards taking on some of this new aircraft maintenance-type work. And then Janet Vincent is the managing member of the Pacific Aerospace Company.
The council, you heard the report from Mr. Metzler, so we'll keep these separate, although seven will be easy once you take an item on six, but we're going to do that. So we wait for a motion on item number six.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. There's been a full discussion on both the items, that there's no other questions on item seven. We'll take a motion on that.
Motion by Mayor Paton McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia.
I don't have a screen. There we go.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to note, I think it's, it's great to see that we continue to see Pacific Aerospace expand out there and need additional facilities, and it sounds like we're running out of hangar space, so.
I was wondering when you were just going to start the discussion.
Yeah, we might need to be discussing that during our strategic planning here pretty soon.
We're prepared to talk about that now, if you like.
Okay. Okay. Jen, item number eight, Resolution WD-13-002 has amended Resolution VWD-13-002 redlines schedule water rates and proposed reduction of arsenic removal facility. I've asked for staff clarification, because there seem to be two items in one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There, there is two items in one. One is the reduction of the rates based on a lower-than-anticipated cost for arsenic removal facilities, so the surcharge can be reduced safely. And then the second piece of this item is that staff is seeking direction regarding the water rate adjustments. As you'll recall, in the spring, about six months ago, seven months ago, we had a lengthy discussion about water rates. And you had asked us to bring it back sometime later in the year, when we had additional information to share with regard to those rates. Currently, the water rates are set to adjust upward as of January 1st, 2014. The city council has voted, I believe, three separate times to not implement that rate increase. And at this point, we do not have a recommendation on the agenda tonight. We're simply seeking direction on what you would like to see based on the information in the staff report. With that, let me ask Mr. McGlade, our Director of Public Works, to come forward. He's also got a couple of different staff members here who he can rely on, should you have additional questions beyond what he can answer on the spot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think one of the items that staff was asked to focus on was, you know, what are the benefits derived by the R-Cube project, and how would that affect the rates? And we did bring a report to you a number of months ago, related to about the first four months of operation of the R-Cube, and I believe it's about $56,000 in savings. And it's not because the water is cheaper, it's the benefit from blending that water with the existing well water that we pump that reduce the arsenic treatment costs. with the existing well water that we pump that reduce the arsenic treatment costs, to the extent that one of the arsenic treatment plants were able to shut it down. We've also then introduced additional piping so that we can blend some more of that R-Cube water from the pressure zone that it's introduced to into subsequent downstream pressure zones. In the overall picture, however, there's not a huge benefit that would necessarily affect the rates with any significance. But we've produced all of the numbers to date for you in the report and the tables that are attached to the back of the staff report. And with that, I'm available for questions, and as Mr. Robertson said, I've got some other staff that may be able to get into more detail if that's what the council desires.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions for the council, to Mr. McGlade? I want to request that we separate these, they're tied together, not directly, but certainly indirectly, and the question, I think, for number one is arsenic removal facility charge, I think that's something that we need, we can take an action on. The reason I'm asking that the water rate adjustment be handled separately is because I have looked at this, I'd like to have the council discuss it more, just my opinion, I don't think we need to put those adjustments to good effect at this time, I think we need to study this a little closer, if it needs to be, or we could consider it as a part of the budget, but councilmembers, your comments, please.
Sean, thanks. On the third page of the staff report, right in the middle of the page, is a paragraph that says, "Given the current and forecasted operating cost levels, it is unlikely that the district can sustain additional rate adjustment deferrals," meaning because of our cost structure, we aren't going to be able to put these deferrals off much longer. Well, after reading that, I went all the way to the back, to the Exhibit 2A, gotta have my cheaters on because this is too small to read. And I'm looking at the cost structure and the revenues generated by the water district from '09 through 2013 and into 2013 projections. And we've got losses each year, small losses in '11 and '12, $170,000, there were a couple of losses in the three-to-five million range. But every year, we have a depreciation number in that cost group of $7.5 million, at least that's where it is today. Now, I'm an accountant and I understand depreciation, and depreciation is a cost, but it is allocating the cost of an asset that's already been paid for.
Right.
So, the depreciation doesn't represent, it might theoretically represent what we may have to replace in the future, but that is not a cost that ratepayers have to cover in their rates today. It seems to me that if we're going to look at the cost, we get depreciation out and we include our planned capital expenditures that are to be paid out of operating revenues, not the capital expenditures paid out of DIF, but what has to be paid out of operating revenues? Because that's the cash demand that we need to cover with rates. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I would like to see, for this purpose, that different approach to looking at what we're going to spend money on in the future to justify rate adjustments.
Comments are well taken, any comments by the councilmembers?
Well, I concur with you, I think we can make, take a motion on the first part of this item and then defer the second part until we start talking about the budget. That would be my motion.
All right. So you wanted one motion then for both, we understand it, if that's okay?
Yeah, motion to accept the first part of this request, but the second part put off until we start having budget discussions. And to your point, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be important, it so often happens, and I know it's for expedience sake and maybe for convenience, but when certain things are combined like this, it really does put a strain on the council, because you, in essence, cause us to have to make one decision over another. If we could keep these things separate in the future, I think it would be in the best interest.
Because it's an ordinance, you know, we wanted to be sure that the ordinance would contain everything it needed to.
We understand. It's, as expressed by the council, there'll be a motion and a second if we don't already have it, but in regard to the staff, we're going to take the arsenic removal facility surcharge, handle that as recommended, that'll be taken away on the water rate adjustment, the council would be to delay that, and if it requires some kind of a further action, that'll be on the next council agenda. One motion to do both. Do we have a motion and a second?
We do.
Mayor Potem McEckern, a motion by Mayor Potem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
You have the item on the agenda as a resolution, so you are not adopting the resolution, you are just doing a separate motion to agree with the reduction of the arsenic surcharge and delaying consideration of the rates.
That is correct.
Correct.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is number nine, and that has been earlier part where that has been, we took an action on that, has been withdrawn, on the basis on that, I didn't see any reason for this to be considered again, Mr. Grohnesky.
Correct, there's no need to take any action on that item.
Item number 10, you have before you as a successor agency to Victorville Redevelopment Agency, long-range property management plan, any questions of staff? We have a resolution number R-S-A-13-007 approving the long-range property management plan for the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. We have a motion and a second?
Motion by Mayor Potem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
At this point in time, we have concluded the business and we are at the public comments on items of interest to the public, Mr. Jerry Laws, where did he go? Oh, no, he was here.
He's here.
Here, he's busy, well, we're going to give him a couple of seconds then.
Mr. Laws, it's your turn to speak to everyone.
Mr. Laws, it is, you're up.
Ask Grandpa, what do you want for breakfast? I said egg and ham and eggs. They went out to the ranch, got the ham and eggs, and it worked out very well. Okay, first of all, I want to thank the city of Victorville, that includes all you folks there, for getting that overpass done. It really helps a lot, the new overpass right over here, okay. That worked out very well. I'm glad to see that. Don't have to worry about Bear Riley so much. Secondly, how much do we owe the citizens of Victorville, how much do we owe the state, the county, or whatever is on that overpass? Do we owe any money to them? Is it paid for, are we paid up?
Yeah, well.
I can't hear you.
What we're going to do is we'll provide you an explanation, because it's very, very long, because it's part of the gas tax fund that the people voted on, and a borrow involving future gas tax funds. I don't think that we have enough time tonight for the staff to even start through it, but we'll be more than happy to give you a written report if you would like that, staff will contact you, or you can contact.
You give me 20 seconds, Mr. Mayor, about approximately $19 million will be withheld from our measure I until it's repaid from development impact fees. That's the only borrowing that occurred.
All right, sounds pretty good, might run you for Congress, or President. All right, now let's go to number two. Indio County is using their gold and silver mines, you know where Indio County is, I'm not too familiar with, by the Sierras, using their gold and silver mine to pay their bills. Now, I don't know whether they're using the city or not, but they are definitely using it to pay the county. Have somebody in the city check out that and make sure that's true. I told them about a year and a half ago at the little camera up here we have where you can talk to the county, and I talked to them before I went on vacation a while back on our supervisor up here. And I told Metzenfield the reason I didn't vote for him last time, because I gave him two years to work on that. Now, Walder Knott gave us that mine in 1966, I used to walk Walder Knott and Mrs. Knott around the farm back in the '50s and '60s, when the Ghost Patrol was on there on the farm. So if we own it, if the county owns it, if the county owns, put a little pressure on the county, find out if we really do own it, which it seems like we do, and tell them we want to process that gold, if we have some gold sold in those mines there, fine, Danny, we know it was the number-one silver mine from 1880 to 1890. The only reason it went down is because silver went down. So, my suggestion is, for the city of Victorville, we're entitled a portion of that. So get over there and process it, don't give me any excuse that the county can't afford to do it, we know where the dollar's going. So get the county to be your, go ahead and give our, process the silver, sell it to the rest of the world, and if we own gold mines, sell that too. And I talked to the governor of California a little while ago about his, our gold mines in the state of California. So it belongs to us, pay our county bills, pay our city bills, and give every little bit, every citizen, only citizens of San Bernardino County, a little bag of silver. And I want to hear from somebody in the city council about that, or the mayor, in a little while, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Laws.
Does that make sense to you?
Makes sense.
It's our money.
Time is up.
I'm sure Walder Knott and Mrs. Knott be very happy we use that mine to pay our bills. All right?
Thank you.
All right, separate by Ding How and Gunhole.
We didn't set a precedent of going over the three minutes, the city manager made a short presentation in the middle of it, I gave you additional time. Next item, discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming council, City Council agenda? Any councilmembers have any items in regard to request?
I have, I have an issue, I noticed that we've been, well, I've been agendizing different things, like, I think maybe a year, over a year ago, year and a half, I asked for a study on what's going on down at the river, transparency in Sunshine on our website, a proclamation given to the officer that ran into the house to save the baby that was burning. And then I heard that when I was absent, I was put on a committee for the library, and.
You were appointed chairman of the.
And I'm not, and nothing's ever coming, you know, on any agenda, and I'm wondering what's going on, and if we could have some follow-through with that. But what I'd like to agendize is that I would like the council to, I'm hearing that the river bottom is filled with felons, and particularly hundreds of 290 registrants, which are sex offenders, and they're down there, and that probation is dropping them off and giving them maps, and they're sectioning them out where they're, they're telling the sex offenders, you got to stay over here, the drug addicts over here, and the people that rob or violent crimes over here. And it's just a matter of time before, you know, something happens, one of our kids come up missing, and the sheriff's department's not doing anything about it, the council's ignoring it, and it's getting worse, they're defecating in the river, they're destroying the river, probation just continues to dump and dump and dump in the river, and they actually go down there when they're looking for them for their urine tests. And I even heard a rumor that they're putting generators down there so they can charge their ankle bracelets. And I'd like to know, what is the truth, and what are we doing to resolve this and clean up the river? And these people are coming out of the river, and they're harassing our retail patrons, begging, they're always on the freeways asking for money, and people are giving them money, and they're keeping them there. And people need to know that these are dangerous felons that are, that are coming out of the river and that are being kept there. And why is it that Victorville is always the dumping ground for this type of criminal element? And I want this council to wake up and start pushing the sheriff's department to clean up the river and get these guys out of there, and if we have to do something to get with the other cities and sue the state for what Governor Brown has done and dumped all these people on us, that we got to do something, we can't just let our city go to the wayside. And I would like to agendize a very, very powerful discussion on this, and I would like the council to come down to the river and tour and see for themselves, because I think that the sheriff's department, the probation department, they preach to us and they say to us, oh, everything's fine, we're doing great, we're rehabbing them, you know, nothing's to worry about. But I don't believe that to be true, and I think that we need, as a council, to get off our dais and our chairs and go down there to the river and get our boots on and see what's going on and what condition the river is, and if all these things are occurring down there. And I would like to agendize that, and I would ask, I don't want to go down to the river by myself, so it be under police protection.
Good comments, there's a lot of speculation about what you have said, I've heard rumors that I know can't possibly be true, but on the other hand, something could be, and the public is concerned, and I think it's a report that we need to make public, we need the input from the sheriff's department, possibly probation. Doug Robertson, would you coordinate that? And that's going to, I don't think you can do it quickly as we'd like it, but we have the holidays coming up, it's a very important item, we have a lot of concerns, and we do seem to have an inordinate amount of homeless on each street corner. I can't come out of a store or fast food or anything anymore without having individuals with a placard in my face wanting money. And yes, people are giving those individuals money. In some cases, in many cases, it's a touching story if you want to hear it, but in at least one case that I know, the guy's duty apparently ended and he went and got in a brand-new pickup and drove away. And I was told this was happening, I went down to see, and sure enough, at the interchange at D Street off the freeway, the guy drives a fairly new pickup, looks like a bum, he looks like he's homeless, he's not. So I don't know if there's some way to screen the individuals, make them give them right citations, but there are people taking advantage of this, and they're bothering our population, and we're here to protect them, and we need to do so. So, quite well taken, I'd ask the city manager with council's concurrence to move on this item, I think it's very important to the city, very important to the image. And remember, the city has said we're going to change the image of the city, and we recently authorized code enforcement to start a process, and they have been very, very, very busy, and they're out on the weekends, and thank you, staff, because I know what you're doing out there. So, it'll take a while, but we are going to do it, the image of the city is going to change.
And I would also like to ask the police chief if he could give, any councilmember that's interested in going down to the river before we get our reports from sheriff and probation, because I want to see for myself, I just don't want to hear everything's fine, everything's, you know, we're cleaning it up, or, you know, I heard that last time, and I'm, I hear it's getting worse. And if you just look under, when you go over the freeway over by Stoddard Wells, I mean, it looks like a horrible K.O.A. down there.
It is.
And nobody's doing anything about it, and I just would like to invite the council to come down and tour.
I agree with agendizing that item.
Good. Okay. Any other items for the council? Now Doug, it's your turn.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to follow up on Councilmember Vaya's request or comment about the library ad hoc committee, Christian, is that in your domain? You have two committed volunteers here to help with that, a chair and a vice chair, and so let's have some communication on that.
I'm sure you have information you can give them prior to the meeting. Oh, and I had one other item, I remember the officer thing, you had requested a proclamation. You didn't do that, city didn't do that?
Unless you did it when I was absent, but I don't think so.
I don't know, but staff would.
I thought that we had, but we'll confirm one way or the other. And if we haven't done it, we certainly will.
Very good, okay.
I know he's won other awards as well, but certainly the city council, I know, wants to recognize him as well.
All right, that concludes the city council's comments, report from the city manager?
Very brief, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the code enforcement changes that you mentioned are being implemented now, and we have two new code enforcement officers who will be starting after the first of the year to help out with that as well. Tomorrow evening is our tree lighting ceremony, which begins at 7:00, you can come a little early for hot chocolate, coffee, cookies, candy canes, and of course, we always have a special visit by Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus. And then, of course, this Saturday, many, I don't know if all of you are, but will be participating in the Christmas parade, that's put on by the city and, really put on by the Kiwanis Club with the city's assistance, of course.
on by the Kiwanis Club with the city's assistance, of course. And that starts at ten o'clock, the Christmas parade this Saturday.
Are you ordering good weather for that?
I was just going to say.
Tomorrow night, it will be cold. Wear something warm. Saturday, it will be warmer than tomorrow night, but probably not by much. Yeah, it officially starts at seven. You can come a little early, partake in some of the festivities. It's, it's just a lot of fun.
Reports from councilmembers, start on my left. Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember McEckern?
Yeah, just to, for code enforcement's sake, if you haven't seen it yet, there is what I would call a shopping cart city behind the mall right now, in the wash, between the residents and Macy's. It is a monstrous structure that someone has decided to build with shopping carts. So I drove by there just today and saw that, so I would imagine it would be there tomorrow as well.
None at this time, but I'd like to know if you would like to go down to the river with me.
Wait a minute. I don't know about this.
I thought she was looking at you.
I noticed everyone's ignoring me.
First time a lady asked me to go to the river.
Not that river, the criminal river.
Sure, I will, if the police department.
Yeah, I have one, I'm sorry. I have one really important announcement, and I have to announce it here because you'll never read about it in the daily press. And I don't mean to offend or in any way diminish the other four-year universities that are up here, but our largest four-year university, the one that probably serves more college students in the high desert than any other, Cal State San Bernardino, the women's volleyball team at Cal State San Bernardino just won the California Collegiate College Athletic Association Conference Championship for the eighth year in a row. We have had high-desert girls, women, they're women when they get to college, play on that team. In fact, some, a few years ago, the national player of the year was a girl from Hesperia, and I'm embarrassed that I can't think of her name. Brianna and Bridgette Harris. Bridgette played the head of Brianna, Brianna played a year later. The team is playing the Western Regional Championships, hosting them in San Bernardino at Cal State Thursday, Friday, Saturday night. The winner of that regional championship will go to the national championships, and Cal State's team has been to the national championship game twice, haven't won it yet. So it's something for us to be proud of. It's a, it's a big deal. It's Division Two, it's not Division One, but it's a sensational program, tremendous program down there, if you haven't paid attention to it.
Mr. Mayor, while we're on collegiate sports, I was just wondering if our city attorney had anything to say about the UCLA-USC game on Saturday?
I was very happy about that, but I was very unhappy about the week before when we got our butts kicked by ASU.
Thank you.
Does the mayor have anything he'd like to say about that game?
I did graduate from USC.
That's it.
That's it. A lot of people, well, never mind. That concludes our meeting tonight. It is the holiday season. Drive safe, be happy. We will have another meeting before Christmas. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for participating, and have a good evening.